Okay. Before we get started, would you please turn off any electronic devices that you might have on? We never had to do this, but now we have to do it all the time. So, thank you for coming on this beautiful day. I assume it's still beautiful outside. I've been in here for a while. We had a really good conversation earlier on ranked choice voting. Dr. Barbara Klein was here speaking from the League of Women Voters of Rogue Valley. And we've had that. And now we're going to be starting our candidate forum for the Ashland City Council. My name is Regina Ayers, and I am co-president of the AAUW. That's American Association of University Women. Ashland branch. It's AAUW of Oregon. Oh, excellent. Excellent. Thank you. We have a lot of -- our members are here today. Let's have our members raise their hands. Yes, we have quite a good turnout. Thank you. Thank you, ladies, for attending. So, let's see, what do I want to start with? I just want to thank everybody in the room for coming out and being willing to spend the time to educate yourself on the candidates and the people that eventually will be representing you who are here, you hear, on our Ashland City Council. You could have been doing all kinds of things, but you're here because you want to better understand how these candidates are going to address the issues that are important to you. So, thank you for coming. So, before I introduce the candidates, what am I going to do here? I'm going to introduce, I think -- oh, no. What I'm going to do is I'm going to address some important dates. If you were here earlier for the ranked choice voting event, you've already heard this, but final date to register is Tuesday, the 15th of October. And Barbara Klein mentioned, you may think you're registered, but if you have changed your address or your name, you may want to verify that you are registered with Jackson County. Voter pamphlets, I've received my voter pamphlet, and so everyone should be receiving those. If you haven't gotten that, you need to contact the county recorder's office. The same with the ballots. They will start to drop on Friday, the 18th. They'll take a few days to get to everybody, but again, if you have not received your ballot shortly after the 18th, you should contact the recorder's office, and that's 541-774-6152. But you can go to the Jackson County website, and you'll be able to see where you can get that information. The candidates did not receive the questions that we're going to be asking. They did receive some broad categories that questions may come from, such as housing, homelessness, the water treatment plant, budgetary issues. So, they will be hearing these questions from the questioners the first time. Let's see, what else? We let the candidates provide a one-page summary that's in the lobby. You can pick that up before or after. And that is in lieu of them having a two-minute opening statement. They will have a two-minute closing statement. Let's see. Questions. The questions that were developed that are going to be asked initially were developed by the AAUW Public Policy Team Committee and also the Ashland News staff. We are cosponsoring this event. In the past, AAUW has sponsored candidate forums, but we are cosponsoring this year with Ashland News. And one of our questioners is from Ashland News. Let's see, what else do I want to say about the guidelines? Okay. After we have the questions that we have prepared, we will open -- I would like to open it up for questions at 3:00. So, we've got a lot of questions, and I would like to have you to be able to get your answers. We will not be asking questions for specific candidates. Each candidate -- each question will be asked of each candidate. And we will alternate questions, questioners. One questioner will ask the same question of all six candidates. They have -- the candidates have originally started with 60 seconds, and we gave them 90 seconds. I don't think if they know that. They may not be able to fill up that extra 30 seconds. I don't know. But maybe they will. Let's see. We have a timekeeper. Leslie Kaufman down here and Lisa. They will be keeping everybody online with warnings about time. If somebody gets to the end of their 90 minutes and they're still talking and not finishing their sentence, I will step in and say, "Please, end now." Oh, no, wait a minute. Don't we have a buzzer? I thought we had a buzzer. Somebody was going to bring that. The infamous buzzer at the city council meetings. We thought it would be good if you could actually hear and experience what it's like to be cut off in the middle of your sentence. Oh, look, the audience is appreciative of that. I know that -- well, we missed that opportunity, but now you can imagine. Yes?
(inaudible)
Oh, excuse me. No, no, not 90 minutes. Please, 90 seconds. We're talking about seconds, not minutes. Is there anything else? Okay, I think I have gone through all of that. I am going to introduce the candidates now. So, in position one, at the end of the table, we have Teresa Cisneros. Also for position one, we have Douglas Nowher. Position two, Jeff Dahl. Position two, Kelly Markatoli. Position three, Dylan Bloom. And position three, Eric Navikas. So, please hold your applause until after all the questions have been answered. We'll give them a huge round of applause, but we really need to keep moving through this so you can ask as many of your questions as possible. So, now I'd like to introduce the two questioners. We have Catherine Ludes. Would you like to stand, Catherine? All right. Catherine Ludes is -- will be the first questioner, and she is past president of the Ashland branch of AAUW, as well as currently the state president of AAUW. Okay, Catherine. And then we have Morgan Rothborn, and she is a reporter with the Ashland News. And previously, she was a reporter with the Rogue Valley Times. So, she knows our local issues. So, let's start with the first question. Catherine.
Great. Teresa, I'm going to start with you, and we're going to come straight down this way, okay? So, Teresa and Doug, and then Jeff, Kelly, Dylan, and Eric. All right? So, we're just going to continue that. Otherwise, it gets way complicated. So, first question. Teresa, can you describe what you personally hope to contribute to as a member of council?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for being here. I'm going to answer that by introducing myself a traditional way and not a very colonial way, which is, I'm Teresa Cisneros. I am of the Carizo Comer Crudo Nation of Texas. I am Crane Clan. I am the daughter of Asusana Campos Quintero, and Sammy Cisneros, and the granddaughter of Matilde Garza, and Elvira Villa. And I bring that -- I bring them into this space and indigenize this space because I want to be able to bring a whole person perspective to this job, to this role, and this responsibility. I think that we have come to a time where there's a big divide, and I think as a community, we're exhausted. We're exhausted with mistrust. We're exhausted with only doing things the way that they have always been done, which is through a lens of policy, and it's always been done that way. And I think that it's time for us to bring the social aspects and to bring our humanity in, because that's where we will find a lot of the answers to the current problems.
Thank you. Guys, let's hold on to the applause till the end. Otherwise, we are never going to get through all this. Okay, Doug, are you ready?
Sure. Yes, thank you all for coming out this afternoon and taking a glorious afternoon to sit inside with us. I'm Doug Nowher. I moved to Ashland five years ago. We actually picked Ashland as the place that we wanted to be when we stopped working quite so hard. And it has proven to be everything that I had hoped it would be, as far as just the enjoyment of living in this place and the beauty that we have and the things that we are able to do, my wife and I here. And I wanted to thrive. It's something that I have watched as far as what we're doing here. And I'm not saying that Ashland is in difficulty at the moment, but I think we have some big challenges coming at us, some already on our plate, some that are looming on the horizon. And I believe that my background, most of my background has been in corporate management, that my background brings a certain skill and ability earned over the years to focus in on an issue, really dive into it, talk about it, understand it. And then, once we make our decision as far as how we want to move forward, a key thing for me, which I think has been lacking for us here as a community, is that council tells you what it decided, why it decided that, and then actively informs the citizenry as to what it is that we're talking about. I think that we've been a little too close to the vest with our information sometimes on city council, and I hope to bring that ability to it, as well as the focus on getting things done that need to get done.
Thank you, Doug. Jeff, are you next?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for being here. It's a beautiful fall day outside. My name is Jeff Dale. Both my wife and I were born and raised here in Ashland, and it is kind of nerve-wracking being here, growing up, going to school here. I think this is probably the second time I've ever been in this theater. I wanted nothing to do with being onstage, but it's been an honor to serve for the past two years on council. I bring collaborative leadership. I bring thoughtful analysis. I love to dig into problems. My background as an engineer is to -- is to -- an organizational leadership is to bring teams together, is to solve complex and novel issues. And I think what I bring most is that I don't have one or two particular items that are of significant concern to me. I'm interested in solving all problems as best as possible. I take into consideration alternatives, opportunity costs, actions, costs, and try to make the best collaborative, empathetic decision with kindness and, if you can imagine, just a little bit of fun doing it, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to echo the gratitude for everybody to be here on this beautiful day. What I will personally bring to city council is a different perspective. I am not a politician. I have an education background. I've been an educator from California. I was there for 30 years, and I currently teach here at a preschool. I'm also a Pilates teacher. And what I think I can bring to the council is the ability to tap into other resources that are not being fully engaged in our city council dealings and listen to the people and hear what the people have to say about the decisions being made. And I have great respect for my counselors here that are currently running and currently serving, and I appreciate their time, but I do feel there's time. It is time for a change. As one of the other candidates mentioned, there has been a lack of trust, and there's been a lack of transparency. And I want to make things very clear to everybody who believes in Ashland, that we can be a better city. We can open the doors of communication. We can collaborate and create a better place to live for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Dylan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dylan, and I, you know, don't know how many people maybe know me out there. I grew up in Ashland, went to Ashland High, SOU. I was appointed to council about 19 months ago, so I'm still fairly fresh. In terms of what I'd like to personally contribute is a lot of the same that I have been, and that's working collaboratively with my colleagues, finding solutions to problems, and really leaning into compromise as a way to move forward and find solutions to these issues that help all of the community and don't alienate one or the other. Beyond that, again, I mean, if you've ever seen a council meeting, I like to think I bring kind of an infectious energy and excitement to everything that we do, and I'd like to contribute, continue to do that, and just a tinge of humor as well.
Thank you, Dylan. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I'd first like to thank the AAUW, Ashland News, for putting on this forum. It's really beneficial to our democracy to allow us the opportunity to speak to everyone. My background is in architecture. I have a degree in architecture from the University of Oregon, so I'm really steeped in the values that are unique to Oregon. And Oregon's always been a real leader in progressive planning. When Oregon passed the Senate Bill 100, our landmark land use planning legislation, Louis Mumford came to the state and said we had a real opportunity to do something different here. And that's the background that I'm going to bring, is a real planning background to continue Oregon's values of progressive planning and progressive land use.
All right. Thank you. So, Morgan, you're up.
Good afternoon, candidates. Now that we got you guys started with an easy one, we're going to dig in a little bit. So, again, starting with Teresa and working our way all the way down. You and another counselor have a fundamental disagreement during a discussion in a council meeting. What do you do? Forgive me. Sorry. Let me move this down a little bit. Okay. So, again, starting from Teresa and working our way all the way down. You and another counselor have a fundamental disagreement during a discussion in a council meeting. What do you do?
I think that I just continue to ask questions and get to a place of really understanding what the disagreement is. And is it a personal disagreement, or is it really a disagreement about a process of things? Because I think that if there's a -- if we're disagreeing about the process of how things are going to happen, there's a lot more options for solutions there. But if we're disagreeing because of our personal values and how we think things should be, then I think that we get into trouble at that point. I think it's really important for us as leaders and in this type of position in community to be a leader, that we get ourselves out of the way as much as possible and really allow our wisdom and our experiences to come through, because we're not there to just represent ourselves. We're there representing an entire community. And that takes discipline. It takes self-discipline and introspection and having the ability to say, you know, I may have been wrong, or I have learned something new today. Thank you very much. But bringing in those skills, those interpersonal skills, so that we can build a collaboration that's going to be best for the community, not best for myself and for my image in the moment.
Thank you, Teresa. Doug?
Well, if I was in a council meeting and I found myself in fundamental disagreement with someone across the dais from me, do I need to speak up? I can hear myself in the speakers. Sorry. One, I would actually be a little bit glad, depending on the topic that we're talking about, because if I'm sitting on council and it's all group think, and we're easily in line on these things, either it was a very simple question, or we're just not digging into things well enough. If I've got a counselor that disagrees with me, I would want to probe where the disagreement is coming from, similar to what Teresa just said here, but finding out if it's a process disagreement or a more fundamental type of disagreement. And then, just not necessarily try to persuade the individual, but, you know, to make the logical argument that supports what I'm thinking of and why I'm thinking of it, and then hearing that person out and seeing the same thing. And if we end up in disagreement, then we'll vote accordingly. And that's the way that council really should work. I just want to make certain that we get to the nut of the issue and that we're not dealing with sort of surface circumstances on what it is that we're talking about. And that's where questions cause disagreement, and with disagreement, we can reach a reasonable conclusion.
Thank you, Doug. Jeff?
Thank you, Morgan. It starts with a fundamental respect for the institution and the rules of order and professional decorum. There's going to be disagreements. That was -- it's not supposed to be 6-0 all the time. You need to, first and foremost, do your homework, so you're asking the right questions from the start. If you're showing up at council and you're just then reading all of the information, it's way too late, and you will not be asking the correct questions, and we won't be getting the job done that we're there to do. So, that's number one. Number two is that you lead by example. Again, it's out of respect. We are all up there together. We are all citizens of Ashland. We are all humans, and that's exactly how we treat each other, regardless of what the issue is. And finally, you -- when you're -- I'm sorry. When you -- you just express it as respectfully as possible, as articulately as you can, and then you move on if a decision's been made.
Kelly?
So, the word "respect" just keeps coming up again and again by the prior speakers, and I couldn't agree more. I think we all need to remember that our country was founded on discourse and disagreement and hammering out disagreements in a very positive contentious format. But you can't get to clear solutions, and you can't find the best answer by being a yes man or yes woman. We have to dig deeper. We have to listen to an opponent or a person we disagree with on council if they have a very valid point, and maybe your ego is getting in the way of you understanding an issue. And you have to listen and take into account the information you're being told by another viewpoint. And so, if I had a differing opinion, I won't say disagreement, because that alludes to a contentious issue, but if I feel one way or I believe in one issue or a decision that should be made in that respect, I'm going to honor my opponent or my fellow counselor person in here. And like Jeff said, doing your homework and knowing the issues is key before you show up to council meetings. I plan to do that.
Thank you, Kelly. Dylan?
Yeah, I think a lot of what everybody else has said, but I think what's important, too, is it's important to have relationships with your colleagues and knowing who they are, what makes them tick, what are their values, why do they, you know, feel a certain way about an issue that maybe you don't feel the same way, and coming with that respect of their own autonomy and who they are, the way they think. Look, I mean, at the end of the day, counselors have disagreements all the time, and sometimes they are fundamental disagreements, and you just have to let that go and understand that's the way somebody feels about a particular issue. There's other times, and I think that it's really valuable and enjoyable for me on council, where it's maybe about process or, you know, little bits of minutia that we're getting into, and kind of having this fun back and forth where we're hearing each other's perspectives and opinions. And then, the best part of that is coming out of something with something that is, you know, that has compromise, that we kind of all walk away, and, you know, Council Heights is really great at this, of like coming together with emotion that kind of ties us all back together. And I think that that's really important, how we present that. Look, we've seen in the past, I'm sure everybody knows it's been in Ashland long enough, certain councils and how that's operated and personalities, and the important thing is something that was said earlier, is checking the ego at the door, having some humility and having some love for the people you work with and the community you work in.
Thanks, Dylan. All right, Eric, down to you.
Yeah, thanks so much. Yeah, I think disagreements are the most important thing in any democracy, that that is the basis of democracy. And I've always been a subscriber to Hegelian dialectics, where we talk about creating a thesis, an antithesis, and then what comes out of that is synthesis. And I think that's what everyone here is talking about, is this very concept of Hegelian dialectics, where we're coming to conclusions through process. So, process is so very important. And I was on a council that had conflicts previously, and we did hire a facilitator. And that was an issue that really was not rooted in any single counselor. It was a dynamic that was very difficult. And through the process of working with that facilitator, we really came to work together very well and really accomplished a great deal. And one of our big accomplishments was the Clay Street housing development. We developed 120 affordable units out there, which has been really unprecedented by any council. So, what Dylan was saying exactly is what we need to do when you're on the council is what I started doing in that previous process was having regular meetings outside of the council with individuals, so we'd go out to coffee regularly. And that really helped to build that synthesis that was needed to move forward with these important projects.
You know, I just realized Eric is always going to go last, and so, we're going to start with you, Eric, and go back that way. We'll go back and forth. That's not fair. Okay, this is going to require my glasses. Okay. The council that is about to be elected will make fundamental decisions about Ashland's future in the coming decades through the strategic planning process and the upcoming budget. If you had to choose three issues as most important for this council to take on, what would they be?
Okay. I think the three most important issues right now are affordable housing, diversifying our economy to create more jobs for young people, and then last, refocusing on our downtown. Our downtown is really struggling right now. We're seeing buildings, I mean, businesses closed down, and we really need to bring back focus. Like I talked about before, my experience on the council before, we really focused on affordable housing. And so, I have that experience behind me and understanding of how to do that, and my planning background as well can really begin to focus on affordable housing. One of the things that we need to do is to look at incentivizing around planning, where we allow upzoning or raising building heights in areas with the incentive that it allows affordable or smaller units for young and working-class people to continue to live here. Diversifying our economy, one of the most important things that we can do around that is to protect zoning for employment and light industry. These zonings are -- we're losing them rapidly, and there's proposals on the table right now to shift the zoning away from employment and light industry. So, that's very important. And then, last again, we haven't updated our downtown plan since 1989, and this is something I've really been pushing for, because it's so important that we focus on the downtown and update our downtown plan, which would be a comprehensive analysis of the downtown that looks at all of the elements of the downtown and how we can improve the business.
Go ahead, Dylan.
Yeah, that scary red sign over there. Yeah, no, in no particular order. Look, I mean, I think wildfire mitigation is top of mind in a lot of our community, certainly mine as well. So, you know, increased funding for AFR, for what they're trying to do, including their single role plan, which has been rolled out, and helping keep firefighters locally in town to put out potential fires. Some of the work that we're doing in the watershed to clear out those dying decane and diseased trees and the underbrush so that we can, again, better protect and better harden our surroundings. On housing, yeah, I mean, it's important to me as a renter and a young person. It's very difficult to break into the market, and I think it's important that we have conversations around low-income housing, but I think we need to develop a strategy, and we are developing a strategy around housing development for all income types. all income types and all types of housing and what that looks like, whether it's duplexes, apartment complexes, manufactured homes and even single family homes, that we need to create an environment where people want to build in Ashland, where it's affordable to build in Ashland and open up opportunities for young families to be able to move here and drive our economy. Thirty seconds. Okay, last one, economic development. Look, I think it's important to have this conversation about the downtown. We do see that the businesses are struggling down there, but I don't think that it's an isolated issue to the downtown. It's about the broader community. We need to lift all boats and focusing on one area is not going to be helpful for the rest of Ashland. We do this all together. And if you go to my website, I have a detailed plan of what we can do for economic development diversification. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan. Go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. So the three issues that I would focus on that I find most important are economy and reviving our economy by looking at different revenue streams that we can bring into Ashland. And an affordable life, affordable housing, of course, but the ability to go out and eat in our Ashland residence. For some reason, we have become a very expensive place for locals to go to. And I believe that a local's night used to be implemented in our city and I believe that would be a great way to foster, to build trust and community within our, our town for people to be able to afford to go into our Ashland restaurants. And as Dylan kind of alluded to, we need to have a whole Ashland approach. We can't look at downtown and say, focus our energy on downtown. Let's make the southern end of Ashland a, a more appealing place to go and live. It's, it's the entryway from the Highway five where people are coming in and that's the first thing they're going to see. So how can we beautify the southern end of Ashland as well? Building community is going to be super important. I think Teresa mentioned that there's been a lack of trust. And before the pandemic, we had a much greater sense of love and community. And I think that's important that we somehow, and I have ideas, to get that, that going. And I would encourage our city council to take an active part in, in, in reviving that community, that sense of community.
Thank you, Kelly. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. With respect to the question, councils have been dealing with this since the very beginning of our city. And what, what are our priorities? How do we arrange our priorities with limited resources? That is the question. And so the three things, I have a very particular order to which I think of things when I, when I go, when I think about this process. The first full stop, wildfire. We talk about existential threats in a, in a variety of different contexts, but as we've seen as recently as four miles that way, there is such thing as a here today, gone tomorrow. And I, I'm very appreciative of all of the hard work that AFR has done. We are extremely lucky to have a, to have a team of experts to protect us, to surround us. And as Dylan had said, to clear out and really do the hard work for wildfires. Second is infrastructure, public infrastructure. Our community just doesn't work without water. Our community doesn't work without streets. It doesn't work without electricity as much as, you know, as I've been here forever and I hear about, you know, it's, it's all of our, our public utilities. You know what? That's incredibly important and all of us get to come down and talk to seven of us about our utilities and, and how we can better build them. Thirdly is economic development. It's, this has been a summer town for decades and we need to look at a four season calendar. And you layer on top of all three of those things, affordable housing. What levers can we pull for that? I'm sure we'll get into that a little bit later. And finally, climate initiatives is an overlay for all of those is incredibly important.
Thank you, Jeff. Go ahead, Doug.
There were three things that I, I put out in a lot of the literature that, that I've been circulating and a couple of videos that I put online if you, if you actually hang out on Nextdoor once in a while. Those were more process choices of mine because the top three for talking about Ashland here in this room, I agree with most of the rest of the panel here, the wildfire is, is the first one that's on the list. Two years ago, I got introduced to a gentleman over on the Ashland Fire Department who was organizing the RAP program. So the Wildfire Resiliency Assessment Program. And I ended up volunteering for it through a friend of mine who had introduced me to it, who is here and I'm glad to see him here today. The whole point behind that is just to go to people's houses, make an assessment as to how vulnerable that house is, not if a wildfire comes blowing through, because if a wildfire comes blowing through, we're all just evacuated and it's over. But if an ember came floating in, what are the chances that you're going to lose your house? And how can we mitigate that, lower the risk and make certain that when you come home after a temporary evacuation, your house isn't the only one on the block that's been burned? So I have 30 seconds. So that was one. Second one is, I'm a businessman and, and I look at our, our economy here and without economy, we're not going to have a whole lot of anything. I'm concerned that with wildfire, with AQIs that at one point a few years back hit 500, that our reliance on tourism for a lot of our money, for a lot of the business that works here in town is, is getting short sighted and we need to diversify this economy. So we're going to have to do the work of actually seeking businesses and explaining why Ashland is such a great place to come to because of all the things that we can offer, build your business here, make sure it fits in the fabric of Ashland as far as the type of business it is. But then half a field day and they're probably paying better than minimum wage. Last one, transparency. We've already talked about it. We need to explain ourselves better. Over to Teresa.
Thank you, Doug.
Derek? I love this question and it's really hard to be the very last one. Eric, I'm sorry that you had to go through that. But as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking, this is really intimidating and this is a lot of responsibility to be able to be within 90 seconds answer such a broad question. So I'm going to get into my own comfort zone. I have over 20 years' experience in social justice work and most recently as an educator and working in nonprofits. So my skill set and my perspective is very different than everyone else's. I have a tendency to want to look at all of these same issues because those are the foundational issues that we're looking at. It's scary to look at that and how are we going to bring some restorative answers that everyone can feel good about? And as I was sitting here listening to everyone, I thought, I really want to have the conversation about post-capitalistic preparedness that includes alternative economies, that includes housing as well. How can we bring that in? The other is, we want to maintain this to be a family place. Our schools are shrinking and that's a very good indicator of how expensive it is to live here because families can't afford it. So I'd like to pay attention to that. And the other is, I'm coming in with an intergenerational model. I want to take care of our kids and why aren't we using the rich resources of our elders in the wisdom that they have, the experiences that they have? In my mind, I'm thinking, we should have an elder committee that's going to be giving input to how they see this. So I, I think that we have a rich community and I think that we have lots of answers and I can bring that.
Okay, Morgan. Sorry, today, so we're going to let Eric go first one more time and then we can flip it. Want to make it kind of fair. Okay. So next question. What steps do you believe the city should take to pursue economic vitality for the future? So Eric, you first.
All right. I touched on this before, but what I've seen is the city is losing its zoning for employment and light industry. One of the big issues right now is the Croman Mill site. And there's a proposal from townmakers to develop that with mixed housing. I was on the committee that worked on the original zoning plan for that site. And what, we had Crandall Rambla planners from Portland come in and they were looking at it. And one of the things that they said is the last thing that you should ever do with this site is to allow housing because developers will always prioritize high-end condominiums. And although they may sell it to us as one thing, what's going to come out in the end may be something very different. And protecting that as light industrial zoning is something that we need to keep jobs here. The Senate Bill 100, when it was written, was intended to create cities in Oregon that were whole in themselves so people could live and work within the same city instead of this becoming a bedroom city where everyone commutes to work in Medford or someplace else. And that is the concept that I'm going to really push to continue, to protect zoning for light industry, for other forms of employment. And work to really recruit businesses that do provide good paying jobs for light industrial type or design oriented jobs. That is the way that we will keep this town accessible to younger generation of people who need high paying jobs.
Thank you, Eric. Dylan?
Thank you, yeah. You know, I, I agree obviously with a lot of that. I think that the approach from the city council so far and certainly the way that I look at it is that we need to have mixed use in how we do things, that, you know, we talk about the importance of housing and I think we need to increase our housing stock, otherwise prices are going to continue to go up and less people are going to be able to move here. Look, as somebody who grew up and still lives on the south side of Ashland, it's, it's, it's got the potential to be a massive economic hub and a place for a lot of young families to live. You know, we talk about the Croman Mill District and we have tools available. It doesn't necessarily mean that there has to be them coming in and buying it. You know, there's the possibility of the city buying it and land banking that land and, and coming up with our own process, recruiting our own developers and telling them what we expect out of them for our community that works for our community. So, you know, going out, doing that recruitment is important, but also being kind of boots on the ground and being very strategic in, in the opportunities that are available to us already and, and coming at it again with that enthusiasm. I think that we've had a tendency as a city to stagnate. I've noticed over the last, you know, 15 years or so, we've gotten a little too comfortable and I think that it's time that we bring some energy and say, you know what? Enough. Ashland is an amazing community with amazing people and a lot of great ideas. Why are we just sitting here letting the, the days pass? Let's go out and make something happen for all of us.
Thank you, Dylan. Kelly?
So pursuing economic vitality in Ashland, we are a gem of Southern Oregon. We have Lithia Park, we have the Oregon Shakespeare Festival, we have Southern Oregon University. And why isn't our city doing better? Why, why don't we have a stronger economic energy here? And what I would propose is to pull in more festivals. Use, use Lithia Park, use the band shell. Why don't we have a Renaissance Fair? That's a, to me, that's a no brainer. And I've heard other recommendations, suggestions such as using our, this is a bit controversial, the, the mountain biking community would like to do more with the trails. And I don't propose that we do anything to threaten our, our hiking trails, but I do believe that working collaboratively with other agencies that do want mountain biking in safe spaces and building new mountain biking trails. And you could invite a healthy tourist revenue by bringing in other types of sources and other types of festivals, other types of people. Let's get, let's get not tourists from San Francisco and elsewhere, let's bring tourists from Medford. Let's bring tourists from other areas who live here and, and know what Ashland is like and want to experience it. And perhaps we need to look at our food and beverage tax and find a way to either reduce it or eliminate it. I know that, that can be challenging, but I feel that we need to figure out new ways to get people in Ashland, spending their money here and stop putting up the barriers with permit issues and, and that's what I would do.
Thank you, Kelly. Jeff?
I remember as a kid, June was marked by my mother just going, the traffic here. And, and likewise, my, my paper route was, was just around Shakespeare. And I remember how much we took for granted the fact that, that Shakespeare was just dark from November to February, just these beautiful buildings that weren't being used. Why? Because 400 and some odd thousand people came through here between May and October and that was the cornerstone of our economy. And that's just what we relied on. And it's changed and we need to become a four season community. We have a calendar where we just don't talk about what's going on or what we have already, but we actually actively work to, to create events that can get us through all four seasons. I mean, we, we're in the perfect spot for this. And, and I would propose to doing that by having a, an economic development group that's just hyper focused on Ashland. And that would be focused on expanding demographics too. I mean, my, my oldest is 25, my youngest is 21 and that, you know, I think they have a, a threshold of exactly one Shakespeare play. And they go to Medford to do the things that they're going to do. We, we need to keep that here. And then, and just create a, a base camp of sorts for people to stay here, to play here, to eat here and then take advantage of the entire valley. So I, I spend my falls traveling around university districts and they're just electric and we just need to bring younger demographics. Thanks.
Sorry. Okay, you went over time a little bit. Okay, Doug?
My initial response would be ditto on what everything has been said so far. Earlier on, I forget exactly when it was, I'm not sure if it was right after COVID or not, but there was a, there was a meme floating around town that was saying that we wanted to turn Ashland into a festival town. I get it. It's a lot of fun to have events like that. When I was living in Philadelphia where we came from, I co-produced concerts in the park that we did for free, similar to what we're doing at the band shell in Lithia right now. Those are fun, those, those create the character of the town, but that can't underpin the economics of the town. So what I said earlier on that last question, I still adhere to, which is that we need a business association of some sort. We had one in Philadelphia that I was working with that actively seeks out other types of businesses that make sense for Ashland, that can use our smaller commercial space, that are not polluting, that preferably, when I first got here, one of the first things I got involved with was jawboning the folks over at AFN saying, it was very important that we get that optical, that fiber optic network expanded out so that we can offer high speeds to tech companies, which are clean, to come here and know that they can send a, you know, a huge file over to India to get it worked on if that's the case because we can offer 10 gig speeds to get there. We can do this and not interfere with our ability to have tourists in, in this town. It's in addition to, but we, I don't feel that we've been focused on it. I look forward to getting on council and finding out that I'm wrong, but I don't think I am. So let's spend some time getting new business here that makes sense and move it forward.
Thank you, Doug. Teresa?
Oh my goodness, this is, this may be difficult for, for you all to hear, but I'd really like to see our community begin to reflect itself in our economies. If you know me, you know that I work very diligently in racial equity, diversity, equity and inclusion. And I don't mean just socially that that's important when I talk about it in the past. That also means economically. We have populations of people who have money to spend that are, don't feel welcome in this town. What does it mean when we hear it works for Ashland? Does that mean that we have to look a certain way, it has to be a certain business? Or can we actually start having some food trucks around where we can honor those younger communities that really love that and build the economy? There's so many ways that we can make these adjustments, but we have to be open to some changes socially. I know that it's been comfortable for us all to think of this little community as, you know, it's the Shakespeare Festival. It's, it's a very elitist community and it has taken me decades to feel comfortable here. And I think it's because of my, my aging that I now am thinking, oh, it's going to be okay for me to, I'm, I'm have the maturity to be okay with who I am and the skin and the body that I'm in, walking around and taking advantage of all of the beautiful things that Ashland has to offer. But we're not tapping into the resources of the cultures that are beginning to populate this community. And I think that that's a big discussion that we all need to have as a community.
Thank you, Teresa.
Okay, Teresa, we're starting with you now. All right, let's see what we got. What do you think the city could do? What do you think the city could do to balance public safety, cleanliness, and a humane approach for homeless people?
Can you repeat that question? I didn't get all the words.
What do you think the city can do to balance public safety, cleanliness, and a humane approach for the unhoused?
First of all, let's be honest and have a real conversation about it. You know, I think that there's just a handful of people that get heard about why we have a homeless issue problem, and instead of getting lost in the weeds of why and judging people for why they're homeless, we don't get to the point of ever getting to a solution discussion. So, what about having that discussion? And look at alternative housing. Look at our unhoused population of people as human beings that actually have needs. I'm going to be honest with you all, in this city, I've been here for 20 years, and I have been unhoused twice because of the difficulty in getting housing in the skin and the body that I'm in as a single mother, and also because I just couldn't find a good paying job to be able to pay to live here as a single mother. So, there's people like me that are on the verge and may be unhoused right now that these blanket judgments go to and make it difficult to have solutions. But I think if we're able to be honest with ourselves and reasonable and compassionate, really, let's have some compassion and say, hey, everybody matters. Everybody matters. And we don't know what unhoused people are going through, their mental health issues, their addictions. All of that is because of a reason that many of us have probably encountered ourselves but have been blessed with opportunities to help us through those issues, and we're not going to be unhoused. So, with the group, with the city council, and with our community, I really believe that the answers to those questions are there, and we certainly have the resources to respond to those answers.
Thank you. Okay, Doug?
So, this was public safety, cleanliness, and homelessness. Humane approach to homelessness. I'm just kind of troubled by the phrasing. We're all in on public safety. I don't think there's any issue there. I think we're all in on cleanliness of Ashland. To say that somehow we automatically lose those two things because we're suddenly adding the additional topic of homelessness is a little off for me to think about. I've met enough people here who are homeless. I'm on planning commission, we go over to Main Street there, the other office for the city, and we have all the camp out there, they're using the back lawn, and have had the opportunity to talk to a few people there. They're decent people, they're struggling people, but everyone I have talked to has been pretty decent. So, I don't think they're a threat to safety, except for those few that could use some mental health assistance. I don't think they're a threat to cleanliness, except for the few that probably never picked up after themselves even when mom told them to back when they were a kid. I do think that there is a certain level of services that we can provide for people that are of sound mind and sound body to help them get some training. I hear all the time, I'm working for fun right now over at a winery, just because there's not enough people for him to hire. Why can we not provide services that allow a homeless individual to clean himself up, herself up, and match them up with a business that says, "I need someone to, you know, work the stockroom," or something like that? Start getting skills for these people so that just perhaps we can get them past the homeless state. It's going to be marginal, it's on the edge, definitely, but one by one, we can start to address this. It doesn't affect the cleanliness of the city, it doesn't affect the way this place feels, it's just simply humane.
Thank you, Doug. Okay. Jeff?
Thank you. This one, although you wouldn't know it, hits really close to home for me. When I came on to council, looking back, I felt like we were in full triage mode. It was do anything, something, anything, and it was, we were just making, we were all doing the best we could with the information that we had at the time. In retrospect, I was ill informed to the magnitude of this and what I've learned in two years. But we need to continue to transition from triage into thoughtful, long-term, caring, empathetic policies that work and that preserve the dignity for everyone. We are using old tools for novel problems. It just wasn't like this 20 years ago. But our city, our city is set up in such a way to just provide essential services, water, streets. You don't have a Department of Homelessness or Unhoused or Social Services at the city. How do we fix that? How do we integrate departments of the city? How do we work with law enforcement? Law enforcement's job is to enforce city ordinances, but just like we have a school resource officer now here at AHS, how do we do something like that relative to the unhoused? How do we do that within the community so that we can treat them with dignity and we can come up with solutions and we can be accountable to, all of us can be accountable to each other? We just have to think differently.
Thank you. Okay, Kelly?
Quite a loaded question here. I want to thank all of you out in the audience because I know that many of you are volunteers in this question about a humane approach to the unhoused. I've prepared meals for the unhoused and delivered them to Lithia Park. I know many of you out there are giving and pick up green bag collections, and that's wonderful, and we have resources here in Ashland. The public safety issue, our police force is tasked with really a huge, incredible job, and I applaud them because it's never easy to look at somebody who's struggling being unhoused, and maybe they are going through a drug addiction or an episode, or they are mentally ill, and the police should not be tasked with figuring out what to do, which leads me to a solution, I won't call it that, an approach, which is to look at what other cities are doing and what is working in other cities. And I know that not having a police car pull up when you have a person going through a difficult time and, versus having a van with dedicated caseworkers, social workers approaching that person is much more calming and humane, if you will. And the cleanliness, I would say, yes, there are issues with some people who strewn their trash around, and it is unsightly, and I get mad and I blame the raccoons, and I don't get mad at the homeless people or the people who forgot to pick up their dog poop because maybe they're just, they missed it. And so, it's just, it's better for us to approach it with an open heart and lack, and no fear and love, because what these people are going through is very difficult.
Thank you, Kelly. All right, Dylan?
Yeah, so also, you know, deep to my heart as well, I mean, this is, much like Jeff, kind of, we came on to council and this was dropped right in front of us, and it was, "Go, go, go, triage, triage, triage." It's personal to me as well. In 2016, I was, I was struggling, and I lost my place, and I didn't know what I was going to do. I was really just trying to focus on getting my wife to be able to immigrate here from another country, and luckily, the support of the community, I mean, Aura and Access stepped up, they got me into a hotel room. I worked three jobs, I was doing graveyard shifts at 7-Eleven, working breakfast at Omar's, and then in the afternoon, working at Napa. And, you know, I found a way to stabilize because I was able to get that help, and I think that that's the approach that we need to have, is we need to identify people that are at risk of losing their housing situation and help them. We need to identify folks that are houseless, that are seniors, have families, that are otherwise ready to go, but they need just that little extra step from the community to get them there. And I think that that's what we should be prioritizing. Let's stabilize our situations, stabilize our community. Now, you know, look, we talk about public safety and cleanliness, I kind of agree with previous comment that I don't think that they're directly caused, one is caused by the other, caused by the other. I think there is some overlap in how we discuss that, and, you know, I think one of the things that council did that I was really, you know, proud to advocate for was the camping ordinance, and it was about, you know, balancing the concerns and the needs of the community, making sure that our public spaces, common areas are open to all. And it also gave us the tools to be able to find people, identify them, and say, "Hey, carrot and stick, you have options, we can hook you up with the resources and shelter, or we'll have to cite you and move you," and it's been very successful, if you've looked at any of our parks in this community.
Okay, Dylan?
All right. Yeah, this is an issue that I've put a lot of work into, working with, organizing with the community to try to raise a lot of awareness for solutions. I think there are a lot of risks associated with having a large population living in abject poverty within our community. People camping around the community create fire risks, we have drugs that can be channeled through this to our youth, through the homeless community. So, it's really a whole community issue, and that's why we need to work on this together and make this project, or this problem go away and really solve the problems with homelessness. I think what no one is talking about, though, is the reason that we are having to triage is because of the cost. The cost has been really significant, and the city needs to allocate more funds to this if we're really going to address this problem and mitigate the problems associated with it of downtown conflicts, fire, and drugs. And during the last budget cycle, we actually hired two additional police officers, and the reason given for that was that we wanted to get rid of the intergovernmental agreement with talent. Right now, we have an agreement with talent, so on a Wednesday night at 2:00 a.m., if there's two calls, we bring talent in, and it seems like a reasonable way to do this. And I really pushed through the budget cycle to allocate that funding from the police into homeless services because it goes so much further to addressing this problem. We're putting a lot of energy into policing rather than into services, and that was a real opportunity. Two police officers cost the city about $300,000 with all of their benefits. So, that was an opportunity we missed to put a lot of funds into addressing these needs.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, Morgan?
All right. Thanks, guys, for bearing with us through that rather difficult question. Let's start with you, Eric. What should the city do to position itself to support growth? Support growth.
Growth? Oh, excellent. Right now, the city's working on setting up climate friendly areas. Under state mandates, actually, from the state legislature, the city has to develop climate friendly areas. And we are looking at the south end of town around this, and what it means is upzoning, and I really support this. If you consider corners like the corner of Ashland Street and Tolman Creek, that's a corner that we could see different types of development. I've seen this type of change in neighborhoods in Portland where you begin to create urban type anchors of mixed use, and then that creates an anchor that changes the entire neighborhood. And that's a neighborhood that we could really see that type of upzoning, mixed use in housing. As well, growth can, again, look at the downtown. I think one of the things that's really going to help the downtown is to get more housing in the downtown. I was working on the Hargadine Parking Street garage and looking at building up on that and working with architects out of Portland and working with the city council, and the city council actually moved to build up on that or to put out an RFP to build up on that. But that's a real opportunity because the city owns that property, and we can see through housing, economic growth in the downtown, and we've seen this in Eugene where their downtown has gone from being in very poor shape to now a vital downtown because young people are living there. And there's a new generation of people who really want that urban experience. So, putting more housing in the downtown, that means people are shopping in the shops, they're eating in the restaurants, they're going out to our bars, and that's the way we can really stimulate these off seasons for our downtown.
Thank you, Eric. Dylan?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I'm glad, you know, Eugene was brought up. I think it is a good example, but I think one of the examples to take from that is that, you know, Eugene is also looking outside of the downtown. You see vibrant economic centers and mixed use housing as well, and I think that's important to emphasize, is that we need to be looking at all of Ashland if we put all of our energy into one place, and I mean that for south side, too. I'm not going to sit here and say we need to only focus and develop on the south side of Ashland. I believe we need to lift up all of Ashland, and that takes a holistic approach to do it and not get lost in the weeds in one particular area. Look, broadly speaking, there's a lot we can do. So, you know, we talk about going out and recruiting firms to want to come here and do business. I think we need to look at our zoning. I think that we also need to look at our regulations that are not safety related. Why is it that businesses and developers are afraid to come to Ashland and we have that stigma? And it's because it is a difficult, drawn out process to be able to build in Ashland. We look at our fees for building, you know, we're higher than our neighbors. Why is it that, you know, even nonprofits that would build low income housing are focusing so much of their efforts in Medford and Phoenix and Talon? Why are they booming and why are we stagnating? And I think that we need to look internally at our systems, at our processes, and find ways to create opportunities for developers, for families, for people interested in thriving and starting something in Ashland to want to come here and give them the tools to be able to do that.
Thank you, Dylan. Kelly?
And Morgan, can you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I have it clear.
Yes, of course. What should the city do to position itself to support growth?
Okay, so, the fees and the permits and the red tape that developers and builders and contractors need to work with, those barriers need to be looked at and changed. I think that's going to be important. And supporting growth, I look around town, I look at the SOU properties that sit vacant and decaying, and I wonder why they are in that state and what can we do? How can we beautify them and as well make them compatible with housing? Supporting growth in the way of bringing new revenue sources, as I believe Eric mentioned, and finding ways to entice people to come here. I know Travel Ashland is a division of the Chamber of Commerce, a very valuable resource, but how can that money be spent differently, more wisely, and more pointedly to, again, bring other people, other Oregonians, Southern Oregon, into Ashland to support that growth?
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you. Yeah, so when I think about the word growth, I divide it into two buckets, so to speak. It's population growth, residence growth, and then economic growth. So, from a resident standpoint, 25, what are we, 21,000 people here, and it was 14,000 25 years ago? I mean, 7,000 people in two decades. It is, we know cities that grow in 7,000 people overnight. So, clearly, we have to come up with new ideas to be able to incentivize people to move here and actually kind of stop thinking about it in a way that we don't want growth here. We want mindful growth. How do we do that? We do that, first and foremost, from a resident standpoint, with increasing density. We're already well on our way for creating, you know, we talked about the climate friendly areas, we talked about changing our planning and code to be able to get more density per unit, per acre, infill. There's plenty of properties around here. God, 60 seconds already? Wow, such a big one. Okay. So, how do we use the properties that we do have, either with vacant or repurposing such as ADUs? And then from an economic standpoint, oh, there's so much more to talk about, but I would just kind of transition between the two with leveraging, how can we help the university bring in more young folks to come here? And we're down enrollment with SOU, how, oh, man, I could just go on and on and on. Okay. 90 seconds, that's tough.
Microphone's time out, okay. Doug?
To incentivize growth here in Ashland, I mean, I think we've kind of covered a little bit of this already, but to add to it, one of the things that I think Ashland has going for it, one of many things I think Ashland has going for it, is the way it looks. And having clean streets, having a beautiful spot is already something that's going to be attractive to someone who has just maybe come here as a tourist and has decided that they want to come in. But population growth, you know, what Jeff was just talking about, in my conversation so far with people I've been meeting with, has been an interesting topic because most of the people circled back to wildfire and said, "We're not certain, we're not certain that we want a lot more people here because it's so hard to get out of here if we ever had to." And it's not an argument to say we should never grow, even though our trend line has been pretty flat, but it is something to take into consideration as we look at the idea that if we're going to grow the city... idea that if we're going to grow the city, we had better work very closely with the fire department and with the risk zones that we have in place and that we understand how to move out if we have to quickly. The rest of it is going to be very similar to what my colleagues up here have been talking about. I mean, I don't understand why SOU is not more a part of this town, and I think it would add a ton of energy to this place and potentially some entrepreneurs coming out of there that might want to stay here. I think Ashland needs to take a risk and see that some properties get built, which we would probably have to fund ourselves because we're going to build them so that we can bring businesses to them and say, we are just ready for you, we will make it easy, we have someone here that's going to walk you through the process so that you can become a business working here, living here in Ashland and be a part of this community. I think that there's a real proposition there that can be done, and I will stop.
God, what is this thing? Okay. Teresa?
I am going to invest some of my 90 minutes because I'm in you all because I'm noticing that is, I mean, seconds, 90 seconds, thanks, that we're getting tired. So I want us to wake up a little bit and think about, I'm going to give you three seconds, think about one word that you can use to define how you define growth. One word, this is a hard thing. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay, you have your word? On the count of three, I want you to just blurt out your word. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you. Welcome back. I want to say, you know, 20 years ago when I moved here, I came sight unseen, I knew nothing about Ashland, but one of the biggest pieces that made me really fall in love with Ashland and why SOU was thriving was because there was a big investment in the arts outside of OSF. It was a huge musical community. All of the big bands would, this was a natural stopping spot on the I-5 corridor for those groups to come that everyone could enjoy. And that lifted the businesses, that lifted just everything. Everyone was involved, and we had fun, and I danced so many songs, I loved it. But now there's so many regulations and policies that go against having that kind of environment in our town, and there's organizations like Epic Ashland that are trying to revive that. So I think we have some good organizations that we can work with to bring some of that back.
Now, right? There you go. All right. Okay, I am going to do this. This hasn't come up yet, and it's something that we're concerned about. So I need to know, starting with Teresa, what's your position on the water treatment plant?
Oh, my gosh, this is such a hard question for me because I don't completely understand the issue. I read everything that's out there, but I don't understand the idea of having to change it, that there's life left, but of the current one and the funding. I don't understand how all of the different pieces work together. But I do know that if we're going to really have that discussion, because it's such a hot topic, I want clean water. I want to not have to worry about if my water is safe or not. That scares me. Or even having access to water. So that's the extent that I have it, and I'm so sorry that I'm not more informed, but I honestly just do not understand it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Doug.
Our water treatment plant, I've had the fortunate opportunity to visit it, and it's old, and it's out a very tiny road that makes it hard to get there. And it is surrounded by trees, rightly or wrongly, let's talk to Chris Chambers, but nonetheless, it is, so the location is suspect. Being in that crevasse of a ravine that is there makes it, from a water perspective, good when it was built back in 1948. I don't think that that location serves any longer, given the changes that we're seeing in the climate. I can't help but think, one of the towns I looked at before we actually chose to move here was Asheville. You know, dodged a bullet there, but I really don't want to set us up here for something possibly similar. Now, those are distant risks, maybe, but they have to be taken into consideration. So with the age of the plant, with the location that it's in, with everything that I know so far, which is not everything to know, I'm for it. And the last reason that I will lay on top of that is that, you know, our forefathers and mothers paid for this back in 1948 when they built it. And I really think it's not a bad thing that it's time for us to pay for the next few generations to be insured of having good, clean, potable water in a location that's not going to fail unnecessarily because it's a good, flat spot that isn't going to have those types of things that I described happen to it.
Thank you, Doug. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. So I'm going to preface this by saying that I will sit down and talk with anyone anytime for as long as it takes for everyone to understand this. I'm very well-versed in the finances of this, very well-versed in the history of this, and it will take a heck of a lot longer than 90 seconds to go all through that. So I'm going to summarize what I think about that comes to mind first every single time I think about this, which is, do we love our kids? I was walking here today through the quad, I was a junior in high school here when we started talking about replacing this, and the water treatment plant was a chipper almost 50 years old then. And so I think about the fact that, then we really got into it in 2012. And quite honestly, I'm upset having to be on council in 2024, and this should have been solved 15 years ago at a fraction of a cost, okay? But here we are, and it is incumbent upon us to make sure that we have clean water for our children. Rates are a different discussion, we'll get into that, that's a secondary conversation, a lot of information about that. Note that council specifically did not vote to raise rates, haven't for five years, by the way. And there will be a comprehensive conversation about how we help our lower-income residents through the rates before we move forward with any of this. But we have to think, we don't just ride this thing out for 20 years and then what? Decide to build one right there? Absolutely not. So I am absolutely for this and glad to have that conversation at any time to help explain for those that have questions. Thank you.
That's a great offer, Jeff. Thank you. Take him up on it. Who's next? Kelly?
I am next. So I am not fully in favor of building a brand-new plant, and here's why. I like the analogy that when your car is failing, perhaps, you need to repair it. And you look at your budget and you say, well, should I buy a new car? Because if I don't buy a new car today, it's going to be more expensive in five years. But if repairing it today will save you money and maybe you do not need to buy a brand-new car because you have other expenses looming, then that's going to be the better choice. So I'm not fully committed to saying, yes, sorry, no, we don't need a new plant, but I'm leaning towards the no because I also want to bring up the fact that the city council had brought this issue and they were going to go forward with it before the citizen group brought it to the vote. And thank God for that citizen group who said, wait a minute, you're going to go ahead and jump into putting us in debt for $75 million without consent of the taxpayers who are going to be footing this bill? And I've heard that the area around the current reservoir is prone to wildfire? Well, let's take care of that. What about clearing that forest area around that water treatment plant? Could that work? Maybe. The algal bloom, could we possibly ionize that water to make it treated? So I understand the concerns. We do need water, and water is life, and I get that. So I would just say, let's practice a little more caution, and I'm glad the city is finally going to address this and give us less rumor and more fact with more engineers who are knowledgeable about this, and it's not just a next-door topic for discourse.
Thank you, Kelly. Go ahead, Dillon.
Thank you. That was unexpected kind of tee-up. So I'm a service advisor, so that means when you bring your car in to get repaired, I tell you what needs to be fixed on that and how much it's going to cost. So interesting. Look, obviously, we could make money and I could say, yeah, keep putting money into it, that's great, but there are times when I have to be very honest and ethical with a customer and say, you need to buy a new car and you need to buy it now, and you should not be driving this one off the lot. That is the situation that we have here. At the end of the day, I know we're short on time, and I have the same with Jeff, please come up, talk to me, love to talk about this all day. I want to talk about the financing, and I want everybody to please try and understand why myself and Jeff and other counselors voted to accept this financing before it ended up on the ballot. This financing is a line of credit. It allows us to borrow up to $75 million, right? We have money set aside to begin construction. This gives us a backup option. It allows us to begin applying for grants. This loan, this line of credit, could possibly be forgiven down the road. This is about providing options for the community, and I'd also like to double down that this is about investing in our future. Do you think that we have the freeways and the bridges and the infrastructure we had because the citizens, the community, 100 years ago said, no, actually, I think we're fine, we really don't need that? Us investing in our infrastructure is part of our democratic values and who we are, and that's what I think that we need to do, is invest in our infrastructure, invest in our future so that it's not our children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren that are having to carry the burden because we weren't willing to.
Thank you. Okay, Eric, bring it on home.
And I completely agree that we need to invest in this. This is, I've spent a lot of my life working on watershed issues and drinking water issues, fighting for the Ashland watershed, protection of the Ashland watershed. And the water treatment plant is located in a very dangerous position, location because of flood risks. And I remember being in '97, having to go to the Bymar parking lot to use the restrooms to get potable water. The water was out for two weeks because all the pools at the water treatment plant filled up with DG. So this is a serious issue, and we really need to invest in this infrastructure as well. And I'd like to say, too, that I've really put a lot of effort in trying to promote this. I've put some of my campaign funds into making little door hangers, I've been knocking on doors trying to promote this. And I think back to Kathy Shaw, and I didn't always agree with Kathy Shaw and everything, but it's really amazing to think back on the things that she accomplished. She got her wastewater treatment plant built, she got her library built, fire station number one built, she passed the meals tax, she passed multiple youth levies. And it really takes counselors getting out there, knocking on doors and supporting these projects aggressively to get them done. And I compliment Kathy Shaw in every way for getting all those infrastructure projects done, but we really need counselors who are willing to step up and really speak out strongly for these projects. And not just do it in these forums, but get out on the street, knock on doors and promote them and move them forward.
Great, thank you. Okay. That's probably going to be our last question that doesn't come from you. We will now take your questions, which we've got up here. But prior to that, I would like to just remind you that October 23rd, there will be a webinar/free forum on the water treatment plant, and it's hosted by ashland.news and the Ashland Climate Collaborative. So look for registration if you're interested in this, October 23rd. I don't know what time. 7:00 to 8:30, perfect. So registration will be available in ashland.news, so keep your eyes open for that, okay? So Morgan's going to start us with questions from you.
All right. First audience question. Is there an issue that you think the Ashland City Council has missed the boat on or should have handled differently? If so, what is the issue and what would you have done differently? Eric, you get to go first.
Sure, great. Right now, we have a real issue with our youth. There's a lot of drug use in our high school, and drugs have become a real problem for our youth in our community, and we really need to focus on this. And over the years, the council has been not prioritizing parks. And I really think that this is part of the problem that is creating drug issues for our youth, is the fact that we're not investing in these recreation programs. And recreation programs are so important to get the youth oriented towards more productive activities rather than getting involved in drugs. And I'm going to strongly support continuing to fund our parks fully because what we've seen over the years, because Measure 50 passed and consolidated all of the levies into a tax rate, the city has been tapping into that parks levy, or the parks mileage of their tax rate to fund other services. And I'm going to stop this practice immediately because it is so important that we fund these recreational programs for our youth.
Thank you, Eric. Dillon?
Thank you, yeah. No, I think that, you know, look, if I look back in the last couple of years, last few years, really, there's not a lot I can identify. We came out of a pandemic, we've lost a lot of staffing, we've lost community members, and I think that we're finally at a point where we're ready to go. We rebuilt, we've brought our staffing back up. But I do look back at, you know, over the last 15, 20 years and what certain councils have done. I mean, as Jeff brought up, let's talk about the water treatment plant back in 2012. Well, who was on council then? We should find out because that was irresponsible. When we look at identifying what the future of Ashland has been, again, I talked earlier about stagnation, there's a lack, there was, has been, a lack of energy about how do we make Ashland dynamic again? How do we make it fresh? We talk about, you know, events that were downtown and dancing, and, you know, there was a livelihood that was happening. We talk about kids playing in the park. I mean, gosh, when I was here at Ashland High and the football team, you know, we were a couple of divisions up above where we are now. We've lost our youth in this community, and that's the future. I want to see my friends that have left this community and have beautiful families and have started businesses coming back here. So if there's one thing that I'm disappointed in, it's that we've completely lost that energy to focus on issues that do not directly impact this community and set us up for success in the future.
Thank you, Dillon. Kelly?
So quite a loaded question because there's a few issues that I know many residents are not happy with, and the lack of transparency. 2200 Ashland Street, that failed purchase of a homeless shelter that can't be used as a homeless shelter, and now what are we supposed to do with it? I do appreciate the council holding a forum last week, and it was well-done, and they tried to present solutions, and I think that's wonderful. I also think that whoever approved the green paint on the south side of town, maybe that was a rash decision and it shouldn't have been extensively placed in the way that it was without citizen input. Citizen input has got to be considered. The other issue that I think the council failed the people on was the 5G issue, or other people would want to say, well, the smart city issue, making Ashland an IoT, Internet of Things city. Do we want to become San Francisco? Do we want to become LA? Do we want to be saturated in radiation? No. And residents brought forth a lawyer. We paid for a lawyer for $10,000, and he was not even brought in to consider that issue. And it was a travesty, it was an insult, and it was disrespectful to the people who worked so hard and love this town. And I want to see that changed. I want to see more and better communication and transparency from this council, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you, Kelly. Jeff?
It was kind of an unexpected tee-up. I'd like to just take a couple of seconds to address that real quick. I thought that that might come up today, and I wanted to, I checked my email before I came down here, and I have over 565 emails just responding to 5G. I was not willing to take taxpayer dollars and hire an attorney that wasn't licensed to practice in the state of Oregon. So anyhow, moving forward, I think that we, I think we're working, I think we've done a nice job, and we still have a lot of work to do relative to communication. We've got a new website up, we've got different ways to communicate with folks, we can always do better, and I love getting out with our coffee and conversations. We should do one of those every two weeks if we could. The other thing that I'd like to do that I really like to work on is create some sort of nexus between our planning department and our administrative services relative to businesses. One of the things I've heard from local business owners is that it takes up to One of the, one of the things I've heard from local business owners is that it takes up to seven days to get to pay a $25 oil CC renewal. And we, and that's no fault of city staff. They're, they're doing what they do and they're very good at it. But we need to update our processes relative to making things easier for local businesses to be able to grow and just, just make it more efficient.
Thank you, Jeff. Doug?
When you're on the end of the line, I do feel like I say ditto a lot. I mean, we're, we're talking very similar things. So I'll just list a couple of quick ones that made me cock my head sideways when they happened. And I said, well, there must be something that I don't understand here. Otherwise, I would know why it went the way it did. One, the water treatment plant, not so much the, the decision about the water treatment plant and whether or not we're going to authorize this loan agreement to go forward, but just simply the way it was dropped out there with no particular information or story wrapped around it. And when I would ask a few questions as to tell me more about this, it's, I'm told, you know, go to the website and there and read it or watch the meeting or something like that. It's like, no, no, no. If you put a ballot measure in front of your average citizen here who is not as engaged as you folks sitting here in the audience right now, they're going to see $75 million and they're going to tick the no box. I don't want to spend that money. That's my concern on this one. So the second thing that I had on here, and this is a small one, and yet sometimes when opportunity comes calling, are we ready to grab the, you know, the little brass ring as you go by? Columbia Hotel, we talk about wanting to get types of housing that are available to people that can't afford the typical house in Ashland. Columbia Hotel was built essentially as an SRO. It's a single room occupancy setup. The woman who bought it has done marvelous things with it. It's now in the past. We can't do anything about it. But it had never crossed the mind of anyone on council or within community development or wherever to say, or within planning, I'm as guilty as anyone to say, why aren't we picking that property up in order to use for transitional type housing where someone can actually come in and not pay a fortune to have a place to stay with a roof over their head as we're moving them into whatever the next step is in the process to get them on their feet?
What is up with this thing?
Thank you.
Poor Doug. I have to say that I'm standing right next to Kelly on this one and I think that the lack of communication has been extremely difficult. You can go onto the website and I appreciate the efforts that have been put into the website, but there's no way that you can answer any questions or formulate any real strong understanding of what's happening with city government just through the website. And the way, you know, I appreciate the coffees too, but for working people and people who aren't even, can be in this room today, how are they going to learn about this? How are they going to know? There's not any information out there. And honestly, I think that there has, again, been a very big lack of diversity in including all of the issues that we come up against. Because we kind of just, you know, sweep things under the rug for, about things that our community really cares about or even big situations. I think that there's probably situations within the communities that I interact with that those of you in this room have no clue about. And I think that's a big miss and it's, that's investing in that divide that we're feeling and that mistrust. But the transparency piece, we got, we have to know more. We can't continue to just say, oh, that's what the, that's what the council has decided because there hasn't been any communication on what the issue is, what the possibilities are.
Thank you, Teresa.
And then also what?
Teresa, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, gonna do a 180. I know a lot of you were here for a really excellent presentation by the League of Women Voters on ranked choice voting, but we need to know, city counselors, and we'll start with you, Teresa. What is your position on ranked choice voting and would you support adopting it in Ashland?
Well, when you look at the people at this table and you listen to the answers that you're receiving, I am totally for it. I think that people who are willing to put themselves out there and love their community enough to do the work that they're doing and be put in this position, I think that it's important. You know, there's not always just one person that has an answer. It's a community. There's many of us that have that. And I personally would prefer to have that option.
Thank you. Go ahead, Doug.
Sure. I'm actually fairly agnostic on it and the reason I say that is because I'm registered unaffiliated. So I don't get to vote until the final vote comes around. I don't get to play a part at the primaries. And so ranked choice would, yeah, help somehow, some way, whatever, when we get to the upcoming presidential election, except there's only two. So one's going to win. Well, pardon me, that's a federal issue, not an Oregon issue. But ultimately, I think ranked choice is a good idea. I think it's hard to explain to people so that they can understand what happens when you go past the first couple rounds of counting if you have a very close vote going on. And it can have a little trouble with the conspiracy theorists sometimes that something's going on because, you know, it, the fear is that it might be manipulated. Doesn't mean it's not a good thing. I like the idea of portioning out the votes for, from the lowest to the next remaining group. And that, I've got 30 more seconds, I'll fill it. And that I would ultimately, if it was, it was on a ballot, and it is, I would vote for it. I just don't think I'm going to, you know, particularly be the beneficiary of it. When I was getting my campaign pulled together to sit up here and talk to you folks, I wanted to get some voter data and found out that I couldn't get it from the Democrat Party and I couldn't get it from the Republican Party because I'm not associated with either one of them. So I just had to blindly knock on doors and talk to people and just see if they had even voted in the last 20 years or not.
Thank you, Doug. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. So I fall into many of the same issues and with respect to what Doug was saying, I'm a registered independent. I like to look at every single issue on its own merits and I won't just go right down the list of something. I just really like to be analytical on this. So, so I was in here earlier and I was listening to the ranked choice voting presentation and had been doing some research on it myself. I tend to like it. I need to tease it out a little bit more just to make sure that there's nothing I'm not missing about it, that's something that could be in unintended consequences. The only con I can see off the top is there's this, there seems to be some semblance of additional complexity. Okay, well, we can work through that. That's not too terribly difficult. But the pros are the, it seems to lend itself to more civility and having candidates talk truly around the issues and to really have some thoughtfulness, civility and not play political calculus relative to, instead of just thinking about the person, you're actually focused on the issues and what really, really matters to a community. So kind of a corollary to this is one of the ballot measures that we'll all be voting on here coming up in November is removing the council members. And that, which I think is actually wonderful. Ashland's not big enough to have geographic awards. So I think that you should just be able to vote right across the slate of who you think you would like to vote for. And I believe, as it stands now, that ranked choice voting would probably add an additional layer of democracy to that.
Thank you, Jeff. Kelly?
Thank you. I am also leaning towards giving my thumbs up to this measure. I do think ranked choice voting makes sense. And if you look at this panel, what a beautiful, intelligent group of people. And you could say, one, two, three, those are the people that I want to serve on my council and serve my community. So I appreciate the presentation prior, that was given prior and knowing that, I guess there are a few communities who changed their minds. And if you had to change your mind, that would be something you could get back on the ballot and, and vote again on it and make reasons as to why it was not approved or why you want to repeal it.
Thank you, Kelly. Go ahead, Dylan.
Yeah, so I also support it. I, in a way, am a product of ranked choice voting. When I was appointed, I had to sit through that process. Look, it's really great when you're doing the voting, but when you have to sit through multiple rounds, as somebody I see in the audience had to do with me, it's anxiety inducing. So that's the only negative I see on that side. But no, I agree. I mean, getting, getting rid of this kind of horse race mentality and pitting people up against each other, I think that, you know, you could see tonight that there's a lot of overlap and crossover between Eric and I. And, you know, maybe we have like a long-term vision is a little bit different from, from each other. But at the end of the day, you know, the stark differences are really personality. And, you know, that shouldn't, personality shouldn't be the main factor in deciding who we want to represent us. It should be about the issues. So yeah, so I support it.
Okay, Dylan. Eric?
I as well support it. I've always been a Green Party member and it's always been one of the platform issues of the Green Party. And I also support the change in the council arrangement as well. Voting for the top three is a much better process for doing that. You know, I would, I would disagree with Dylan that this isn't just personnel. I think we have some clear differences. I do think that Dylan has supported expansion of the urban growth boundary. I've stuck to Ashland's tradition of protecting our urban growth boundary. I support development of the downtown and looking at our downtown plan. Dylan's looking at more southern Ashland, which I, which I support as well. But so I'll just in there. And I think that, you know, the more democratic process, you look at ancient Roman societies and they had centurions who would represent 100 people and vote on every issue. So it was a real grassroots democracy. And so that's, you know, the more grassroots democracy that we can promote, the more people involved in our democracy that we can promote, the more we can move away from a simple two-party system. I think that's beneficial.
Great, thank you.
All right, let's start with you, Teresa. Do you believe that our tax dollars are being spent in the wisest possible way? If not, how would you change it?
Lord, no, I don't. I think that we get lost in always only looking at budget and investment and housing and all of those pieces. In education, there's a term called social emotional learning. And social emotional learning, more recently because of COVID, has been a huge federal goal to address that within our public schools because of the disconnect that our students felt in COVID having to be, go through education in quarantine. And I think that it's something that even communities like ours need to have. We need some of these social emotional learning pieces that we just don't invest in. And I don't know why that is. I don't know what it is about the feelings. I don't know, I don't know. People are afraid of feeling. People are afraid of vulnerability. People are afraid of connection. But honestly, that's what we all need. We need some connection. And I think that there are some ways that we could really invest in some community events, multicultural, anything. We can have, you know, elders and the school age kids coming together. There's so many different community building and engagement events that we could host to begin bridging those gaps that I really think will bring a lot of answers to many other issues that we're facing.
Thank you, Teresa. Doug?
I am not smart enough to know if we're spending our money in the wisest possible way because I suggest that if you ask 10 people in the city that we're spending it this way, you're going to get 10 answers of, no, this is how you should have spent it. So, you know, wise really comes down to, if you're going to counsel, is just what we've talked about already here, which is spending a lot of time talking to citizens here in Ashland, having the conversations to figure out what's on their mind and letting that inform your choices when you're putting together the outline for what it is you want to do with the budget is, you know, for the upcoming biennium, as the case may be. And recognize the circumstances will change. Things will have to be shifted around. It will go on. Circling back to transparency, tell people why you're making those changes. So wisest is a tough word for me to talk about to this, but I do know that, that if we're going to spend money in certain things that weren't originally budgeted, we ought to be talking about the explanation as to why we're going over there. We have such a big budget because we own our own utilities in this town that it gives the ability, or at least it gives the cover to having a lot of money sloshing back and forth within the budget. And then people hear little stories about that and suddenly we're starting to undermine trust. We went through a whole period where we had people thinking that there was a structural deficit in the budget that we had just passed. I heard stories on both sides. I didn't have time to dig into it. I'll ask Jeff, should I get the opportunity? Because it sounds like he's all over it.
Thank you.
But, but that being said.
Doug, you're at time. Thank you, Doug. Jeff?
All right, so the question is, is are our tax dollars being used in the wisest possible way? And I, while it's considered bad form, I would answer a question with a question, to and for whom, right? You ask 10 or 100 or 21,000 people and you're going to get a lot of answers, a lot of different answers. But the job of council is to assimilate all this information and allocate our resources in the most productive way for the most amount of people, the most amount of time that we can. And, and in a way that aligns with our values as a community, which there is a tremendous overlap in this community as far as values go. We just have different ways of thinking about how we're just going to tease out a little bit of the, the methods in the process. When I think about tax dollars in the wisest possible way and you think about how money is allocated, you can kind of separate it into private and public. In private, we think about companies and corporations and the corruptions and rules that are being not applied equally. But on the public side, it really boils down to efficiency and transparency. And, and can we figure out better processes that allow us to use limited resources to get more value, more bang for our buck? And finally, again, relative to our budget, we are transparent. Any one of us in this room can just grab a computer with an internet connection and go just look at our budget. I'll walk you through it.
Jeff, you're at time.
Uh-oh, busted.
So no, I do not feel that our tax dollars are being spent wisely by this council. We spend a lot of money hiring consulting firms to analyze an issue and then that money might float back over to that consulting firm because they're going to actually provide the services that we consulted for to get done. So I would, I would question that. I do think that the $40,000 that was just spent on fancy trash cans for the downtown area for beautification, great, but why? No, I don't think that was money spent wisely. I also feel that the $43,000 that was spent on the attorney for the 5G ordinance that Jeff and I have been engaged in was not spent wisely. Again, because the citizens had raised money for an attorney and we were ready to, we would have paid for it. We had the money. It's still sitting there. And that was not wise. So why? And then in another forum, my, Jeff mentioned that he had to go digging into this fancy new website. Well, we don't want to have to spend time digging and that budget is so hard to read and so hard to decipher. It is not satisfactory to have something that you have to have an accounting degree to understand. So I think transparency has got to be reinstated or used in this council. And I would, I would offer that as my service to help people understand. So, yeah, I'll just stop there. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Dylan?
Yeah, just use a little bit of time to say that anybody that is seeking to be on council, trust me, once you get there, you can talk as much as you like and even blow viate. And anybody that's seen a council meeting knows that. So you'll all get your shot. Look, and we're talking about, you know, whether we're spending money wisely. Yeah, I believe we are. We're making, you know, good, sound investments. But, you know, I think that we also need to understand the bigger picture here. And I want to address, you know, this point is that anybody, any counselor or anybody running for council that says that, well, I'm going to do this and I'm going to make this happen, or we shouldn't be spending money on this or that, needs to understand that it's a, it's a group effort. None of us gets to stake claim and claim and say, you know, we made this happen, or we built housing, or, you know, we passed this in the budget. No, we did that collectively. And it's that teamwork that's important. So, you know, we can have disagreements about how certain things in the budget, that's okay. But really, just to tie it up, because I want to be on time here, is that one thing that I would like to see going forward is that we really put an effort into investing in the future of Ashland. And, you know, we've been doing a lot of catch-up and now it's time to invest more, like our child grant program that's allowing a lot of families to be able to afford childcare and to work. So those are the kind of initiatives that I'd like to advocate for. Whether they pass, well, that depends on how persuasive I can be and how receptive other people on the committee are.
Thank you Dylan. Eric?
So I've sat on the citizen budget committee for five years now, four as a councillor and one as a citizen member. And it's really difficult looking at spending issues. All cities across Oregon are being affected by measures 5 and 50 where their taxing authority is being restricted significantly. And I've seen over the years, from when I was on the council 15 years ago, the rollback in city services. And it's sad. And we're to a point where if we continue to roll back city services, I mean, we're gonna have to cut parks. That'll be the first thing, begin to sell off parks property. The other thing we could do to cut further is to look at things like outsourcing our planning department. So Jackson County Planning Department would take over our planning. And having an in-house planning department in Ashland is so important to our long-range planning. So those are really the things that we're looking at if we continue to cut our services. So I agree with Dylan. We need to look long-term. We need to continue to invest in Ashland. We need to continue to invest in our youth. We need to make this a healthy community that is attractive to all types of people and continues to fund services and keep our programs effective and robust.
Thank you Eric.
All right, so this is gonna be our last question. So if your question has not been answered, this group will be out in the lobby and they will, they will take your questions. Okay? So we've got, we've got a time thing. We want to get you out of here by 4 o'clock because we said we'd end at 4. So here we go. Eric, I'm gonna start with you. What do you think is the most important function of the city council?
Of the city council? I think the most important function of the city council is to be a facilitator of democracy. You know, we all have ideas. We're all stating our ideas here, but really, it's about bringing the community together. It's about allowing democracy to take place. It's about listening to people in the council chambers and not making decisions prior to listening to the community. And that's what I'll really strive for as a councillor, to engage the community. And it's one of the reasons that I'm really working on trying to promote the downtown plan because that is something that will bring the community together. Will bring all the stakeholders together. Will bring the property owners, the business owners, the broader community. We'll have focused meetings. We'll have broad community meetings. And it's that type of synergy of the community working together to find solutions that I'm going to work to promote as a city councillor.
Great, thank you. Dylan?
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, as a councillor, the most important thing is being a conduit between, between the people, our community, the neighborhood. I mean, I'm sure we'll all agree with that up here. But it's also about, you know, due diligence and doing the work of studying and, you know, setting your own personal priorities and then being able to convey those to other councillors, working collaboratively together to find solutions that work for everybody. You know, and I think, you know, being responsive is really important. One thing that I really, you know, pride myself in is that I'm very available. If somebody wants to message me on Facebook or text me, you can have my personal phone. It probably maybe bothers some staff, but I'm right away like, hey, I don't know the answer to this. You know, why is this fencing going up and why does it look like this? Well, let me send out a message and see what I can find out. And that's what I mean by being that conduit, is just being responsive and connected to the concerns and questions that people have in our community and doing it in a really, you know, responsible and professional way. And, yeah, I think that's all.
Great, thank you. Go ahead Kelly.
So I'm sure Dylan and Jeff can attest to how difficult this job is. And I don't want to present it as solutions are easily found. I understand that it's very difficult. I do think the most important function of the city council will be to be a liaison, to be an intermediary between the residents and the city government. And listening to the people and hearing what they want and need. And we understand, wants and needs can't be always compatible. You may want something, but you may not be able to get that. So I think that using, having the council be available and emails, Facebook, Instagram, Nextdoor, whatever social media platform you enjoy. I applaud Dylan. That must be very difficult to give out your own personal phone number for texting. And maybe that works for him. I don't know how to make better choices for our residents without giving that much information. I will say that I do think the better solution will be to have more one-on-one communication. Sorry, not one-on-one, but group dynamic where you meet with a neighborhood as a councillor. So as a representative for the people, you would actually go and the coffee with the councillors is on the right track. But as Teresa pointed out, many people work and they can't, they can't attend. So let's have opportunities where we have a community liaison, a neighborhood liaison, working with one councillor, and there's meetings where you can go and you can ask that councillor pointed questions. Hey, what is going on with the budget? Or hey, can you fill me in on the water treatment plan I don't understand? Because it's that lack of transparency and the accountability that we've got to take into account and improve in Ashland. And I believe we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you Kelly. Go ahead Jeff.
I think there's a dual mandate for council. The first one is effective leadership in executing policies that benefit the current and future state of Ashland and really thinking through all of, all of the, all of the different alternatives and opportunities and so forth. But the other part, as much as I enjoy that and solving problems, I think equally is important and privately, one of my favorites is, is that the community needs to feel heard. And we need to be, we need to be mindful that being heard doesn't necessarily mean being agreed with. But quite a few people ask me, what's my favorite part of council? And it's really public forum. And it's extremely difficult because it's one way and it's meant to be. That's council rules and so forth. But I would, I would challenge, I, the number of times I've come home at 11 o'clock at night, or even the 2200 forum, we were there Wednesday and I was there till 9:30, standing out in the dark in the corner of Fourth Street, just talking to people. The emails that I spend answering, I just absolutely love it. We talk about transparency up here, sure. I don't know how to explain to everyone the thousands and thousands of emails that councillors have answered. I mean, we just love communicating. And I'll talk with anyone, anytime. We're just, we're all in this together. Just trying to make Ashland better. I welcome any ideas. I welcome any insights. Let's, we're in this, let's do this. But that's where I think council is, I think that's the most important part of council.
Thank you Jeff. Doug?
I've gone over too many times and used up more than my allotted time, so I'll keep it simple. I think that the key function for council and for councillors is to carry the citizen's voice into the room where the decisions are getting made for our city. So that they feel and trust that they've been heard and they see it in the results that are coming out of council and the things that are happening in Ashland. And that includes, very important to me, their views on what they want to preserve about Ashland and what they think the future of Ashland could and can be as we talk about these decisions. Because a lot of the work is operational, today's stuff, but there has to be a view of, what's the historic part of Ashland that we never want to lose the heart as we move into the future? But as we move into the future, what does Ashland physically begin to look like and how do we want to conduct ourselves here as citizens?
Thank you Doug. Go ahead Teresa.
This is, I want to be, have some humility here because I've never been in that situation, so I can't really speak to that. But I can certainly speak to it as a resident of Ashland and wherever I've been, lived the experience that I would like to have. And I would like to feel like I belong in that city. I want to feel like when I do speak about issues that I am not just heard. I got a little bit triggered Jeff by your comment about, you know, we hear everyone. But when you are a part of the population that isn't included, and when you're a part of the population that doesn't really have a voice, it's hard to know that you're being heard. And being heard and, and holding yourselves accountable and taking full responsibility for all residents in Ashland is a little different. I can't tell you how many times I've been in relationships in my current job when I hear, I hear you and you're, you know, you get the lip service of this, but then nothing actually ever changes. I think that that's what I want to bring because behaviors make, build trust. Behaviors help community members to really feel like they're being heard, not just being given lip service of, yes, I hear you. I want to see what the action is of that.
Okay, thank you. So that's our last question. Regina's gonna bring it all together, but I have a little bit of homework for you. I want to make sure you all go out and vote. Okay? Whatever you do, go out and vote. We've got a wonderful bunch of candidates. We've got, we've got all sorts of issues coming up. So please do check out your voter ballot, your voter pamphlet and read up on your issues and talk to them and ask questions and vote. Thank you.
So we told the candidates that they would have a two-minute closing. But whoever sent us this question, I think, is the perfect question for a closing. So we're at 4 o'clock. So you spoke about what your role is as a councillor. And I think that you all gave very thoughtful answers to that. And I think that's a good way for us to close this event. So let's thank the candidates. So I'd also like to thank a few people. I'd like to thank the school district for allowing us to use the theater, for the staff that enabled us to put this on. We have a videographer here, Nathan Lathrop. He is recording it. We will be posting this on several websites. It'll be on the AAUW website and the Ashland News website. And there are some YouTube channels that will also be on. So thanks to our timekeepers. Thanks to those of you that wrote questions. I think they were very insightful and much appreciated. And I'd just like to thank you for coming today. And as Catherine said, please vote on November 5. So thank you.